All right, stand by. And five, four, three, two, one.
Good evening and welcome to the Long Meadow Select Board meeting for August 19th. We've already had the Pledge of Allegiance and so we'll go straight because we had executive session first, we'll go straight to announcements. Jay, do we have any announcements?
Just that, Madam Chairman, first, the plastic bag program has been, bylaw has been implemented. We've granted, I think, two waivers so far, but so far it has moved along without a great deal of incident. Secondly, we did have a difficulty today from the storm that struck the town briefly. And as we are at the moment, the fire chief and DPW director have sent me notes indicating that there are still about 700 individuals who are out of power. There's some tree work done, there was about nine properties where there was some damage of some nature that was there. The initial report was that there were no injuries and that Eversource and the tree contractor, as well as DPW, police and fire are all on the scene and coordinating. Thank you.
Great, second one. The town of Long Meadow is under contract with a private organization contractor to do the measure and list revaluation where they actually physically go out to each residents in the community and that you might see them on your property, they're going to be taking out tapes and things like that to do actual measurements. Anyway, we had started with Precinct A, it's a long-term contract, we were going to be doing 20% per year over the five-year contract. Just FYI, Precinct A was FY19, Precinct B is FY20, which we are now in. They have finished Precinct A and they are now in Precinct B, so for those folks in Precinct B, you may see a marked car that is going to say Board of Assessors or KRT. They have all the credentials at the police department, should there be any questions about them on the property. But just want to make the residents aware that we have to go through this every nine years and we are up against this to have this done FY2024, actually. But as I said, we're doing 20% every year between now and then, so.
Okay, and also tomorrow night, we have a town meeting, seven o'clock, and I believe it's going to be held in the auditorium.
Yes.
And there'll be two warrant articles, so it shouldn't be too long of a meeting. And I just received word that you could still watch us live on TV, or you can also go to your computer, and we're now going YouTube Live rather than livestream. But we're still live, but we're just a different platform. Any resident comments? Select Board comments?
Actually, yeah, I do have one. Let me just pull this up, so I think we get to it so quickly. So, can I read this? Let me make this larger. But this is really something I've been thinking about, you know, as I read the papers. And so for me, the situation with the gas transfer station is like finding an uninvited swarm of bees has moved into your backyard. For months, I've been getting stung. Knowing how to best deal with this situation is difficult. As you know, from past town meetings, even the way the town reacts to bees is complicated. This transfer station is not something the town would ever seek to bring to our backyards. The opponents to this project keep stinging me because I'm a Select Board member. The gas companies involved are adding additional pain because they have not explained the project to the board or the town. If they described that a large amount of honey and positive things to our ego systems like honeybees would come with this swarm, it would be a little bit easier. But as we all know, like the bees that are showing up in our backyards all over town at this time of the year, they, the gas company, do not ask permission or explain the value to our backyards. Personally, I'm a strong believer that the world needs to address the buildup of greenhouse gases. The burning of fossil fuels like natural gas is a proven contributor to the complicated and widespread problems of climate change that seem to be increasingly affecting our way of life. Just out of principle, opponents to climate change should be protesting any development like this that increases damage to our environment. The discussion of the best actions in regards to fighting climate change are extensive, and I do not want to go into those now, but I will not be surprised if the warrant article to look at zoning, you know, tomorrow night passes. In closing, other than to let everyone know that getting stung on a regular basis is getting old, I'm feeling that other than negotiation of a host agreement that would provide some benefit to the town from this uninvited gas transfer station, I think the town needs to get tax payments from the gas company to the tune of 2.7 million plus the additional value of the structures that will be built. If the company's paid 2.7 million and the town would have needed to pay 2.7 million to purchase the land, then this is the tax amount, and the town should not settle for property valuation and taxes paid on any amount that is lower than this. And, you know, as we move forward on this issue, hopefully, I know as a member of the Select Board, I do not speak for the Select Board, but, you know, we all have the community's best interest in mind. Thank you.
Any other Select Board comments? Okay, moving on to the interim town manager's report.
A couple of items, Madam Chairman. One is the landfill closure and the capping bid opening has been moved to August 28th. So we are, that's there. Secondly, we did sign a memorandum of understanding with the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission relative to the LED project, and we're in the process of setting up a discussion with the committee members and Eversource for next week to get a better sense and develop the clear timetable relative to moving forward on Eversource's expectations and issues related to Eversource. So we will do that. We have discussions today and we'll be moving that forward further with the administration staff relative to the, what's called Mass General Law, Chapter 149, Section 6 and 1/2, which is the OSHA implementation or the requirements on OSHA, and I'll send you some material on that, which is now applicable to, as of February 1st of this year, to all public subdivisions, political subdivisions. And so we are going to take a look at that relative to what the requirements are and develop a game plan with regards to how to respond to it. It includes documentation, it may include a review of an audit and a plan of action so that if we were audited or if something occurred, because it is designed for, to ensure and enhance worker safety, that we are doing everything we need to do and are well-prepared. I'll send you some material on that in the next package. We did meet with the town of Enfield on Maple Road, I don't know if you want to.
No, go ahead.
So the chairman was there, myself, and then four representatives of Enfield dealing with Maple Road, we, which is a non-paved road, and so, but the residencies, all the residents on it are actually in the town of Enfield. So we are in the process of looking at that now and developing a plan relative to what the community might have in response to Enfield. To their credit, the Enfield representatives indicated that they certainly understood that it was Enfield who benefited from the road and the maintenance of the road, but that they, and they were willing to do some cost sharing, but we need to understand what it is exactly, what level we're bringing it to, and addressing the issues of making sure we're addressing proper issues from the community of what we're doing and also issues of public safety, so.
I guess I, what part of Maple Road is unpaved?
It's behind Grapevine.
Right.
Yeah, so.
That's in Long Meadow.
Yes, but we warn you, if you didn't know, it's in Long Meadow. If you decide to drive it, it's very rough.
We had to go, we had to find it, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
And but it's, I think he sent a map, it's in Long Meadow, and they realized that they were not legally supposed to be doing this.
Yeah, I saw the map, I just didn't understand.
Yeah. Last item, just to, we're working DPW, the administration and citizens groups are working together to put together the implementation plan for the recyclable bins that are coming on order, they're due here sometime in late September, beginning of October, and how that's going to be vetted out is being worked on now. I know that there's going to be a presentation before, and they anticipate doing a presentation to this board in your first or second meeting in September. But we are working on that now to make sure that we can get as smooth a transition as possible. This will be the replacement for all of the waste bins will be 35 pounds, so.
Any questions for Jay?
Can I just go back to this? So now I got the map up of this.
Yeah.
The question is, the residents want us to pave that road, is that?
No, not necessarily. It's the town of, our sense was, I think, that the residents in the town of Enfield had gone to their representatives and asked them to see if the road could be improved or made passable than it is right now. Right now, the town is putting, is not maintaining that road, is that accurate? Right. So it's within the town, they have not maintained it, the residents served are those in Enfield. So the Enfield representatives came to try to develop some kind of an understanding of who's doing what and seeing if they can get that road to a certain level that can be then continued. And who would do that was subject to a discussion, they were open to it, they were also open to providing financial support in order to ensure that it would be done.
It's a dirt road, they were talking about just grading it because it's like this right now.
Yeah, that's fine. I, I'm not trying to create an intertown issue here, there, you know, it's interesting that they've come to us when they need this, but when we went to them about the development of the Mayfield apartments and they told us to pound sand, in just those words.
Well, now, actually, it's very interesting, what I found nice about the meeting is the mayor and the town manager said, there's a lot of issues that we should sit down and talk about having, so they said, we're discussing this, but we'd like to put other things to the table that you're interested in and looking at a full agreement, intertown agreement or cross-state agreement, which I thought was really nice to hear.
She's talked about that two or three years ago.
I know, yeah, and the doors opened there.
There are other communities too, the ones that borders.
Yep.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Well, I just want to comment, there was a letter in the package here from Chief John Stankwitz, from Sergeant Colonel Masafaro, and it just showed, you know, what great police department we have. It talked about a resident who was upset about the number of trucks on Redfern Drive in Long Meadow, and it talked about the engineering department being involved and Pioneer Valley Plan Commission doing a traffic study to find that the threshold or the number of trucks on that road didn't qualify for any sort of limitations for trucks to be going down there. But it, you know, it shows that, you know, the request was taken seriously, they looked at the options and they, you know, it's helpful for the board to see all the restrictions, you know, or the, you know, when people think, well, you know, I don't want, most people wouldn't want trucks going down their road anyways, but there are a lot of restrictions about what we can and can't do.
And there's standards. So we, I did get the copy, I asked him to convey a copy of the report, he did to me today, I'll take a look at it and then we'll convey a copy out, it's public record, so that's fine. Yes, thank you.
That's great.
One other final note, just, I did get, or we did, the office did get on Saturday the nominations on the Republican, which I know is on your agenda, so I have it if you want to do it tonight.
We got the email.
You got the email, so I just wanted to make sure. Okay, fine, terrific. All right, thank you.
And then I'm putting together a small report to let the board know things that I found out this week, over the past two weeks. One is that wireless tower at the tennis court, I want to give you an update on that. One of the residents had called complaining about the reception in their homes, I know a lot of people do have trouble with the Verizon reception, so I went to follow up to see where we were with that contract, and I found out that we were waiting for Verizon to give a lease, and they hadn't given the lease yet. Well, for some reason, all of a sudden, this past week, they've decided to give the lease. So they've come to an agreement with the wireless company, which is Wireless Edge, and so I'm very happy to hear a lease agreement has been settled and, because Verizon's an important partner in town, and we can just follow the progress of this project, and hopefully that will turn around in the next 30 to 60 days and they'll complete the signing. In regards to the Tennessee Gas Pipeline, just to, most people know that agreement was signed with Long Meadow Country Club with Tennessee Gas Pipeline. The project has also passed MEPA review. The bylaw that was passed in the spring, we're still waiting to hear back from the Attorney General's Office. They said, Clerk's Office and the Attorney General's Office said they should have an answer to us by the 29th, but the Attorney General's Office said, it's a complicated issue in the law, we might be asking for an extension on that date, so we're not too sure. And we are going to have another citizens' bylaw tomorrow night, which we'll be talking about with our, on the warrant. I attended the Conservation Commission this week, they were reviewing a report from the wetland consultants regarding the Old William Street synagogue property. After intense analysis, including looking for frogs at midnight by the commissioner with some Boy Scouts, the consultants found no wetlands on the property. There is a very large off-site, isolated wetlands area, and that is a technical term, and the 100-foot protected area was marked on the site. The developer will be going in front of planning with the project of assisted living facility for individuals with memory issues. I want to thank the Conservation Commission for their work, it's a complicated process that requires a lot of knowledge, and we're fortunate to have so many members in our community that can serve on that board. We already talked about the mayor attending, I also attended the Westcom meeting with Chief Dearborn. The project seems to be on target for opening the regional dispatch in October. I think it's important, though, the Select Board stay, follow and stay involved with the development of the finances of the group. The budget still has a lot of early startup costs that our CFO and Assistant Town Manager is keeping an eye on, and grant money's coming in at different times and different amounts, but they don't anticipate a problem. As the program evolves, we should have a better idea of what our share will be annually, a lot of other towns are beginning to show interest. My only concern, the budget, that it does not consider OPEB and pension liabilities. I know it's just beginning, there's a lot of high startup costs, but I think as these startup expenses roll back, I'm hoping the process be put in place for investing for future payroll liability costs, and I think Paul's on board with that, too. Our moderator, Rebecca Townsend, has invited me to be part of a pilot project on community engagement around the middle school building issue. In the near future, she'll be sending out briefing materials to the boards and committees for their input on the project, so you should be hearing about that in the next month. The planning board last Thursday approved the bylaw that will be put on the warrant unanimously. A second office building is going to be built at the Dwight Street Development in 2020, they were making some changes in front of the planning board on the stormwater plans for approval. The Pride Development Project was also resubmitted to begin the planning board process again, so that's coming up. The COA had an unusual summer meeting this week, they approved the petition, which you'll be hearing about in new business. The program needs of the future were discussed, and the COA Board was thrilled about the $50,000 grant for a generator for the new adult center that the town received after extensive work from Representative Ash and his assistant, Robin. We're very excited about that. Discussion was, occurred about a possible plastic cover for the new van to be bought by Faloka, but I think we have to really follow up to understand the process of accepting gifts in the town and maintenance of these type of facilities. And those are the only things that I ran into this week. Does anyone else have something to report that they attended in a meeting or anything?
Well, I don't know if we do it, but I had talked to the lawyer about the library agreement, and so that will be delivered to this board in two weeks.
Oh, great.
And they'll bring it to us.
All right, I'll be sure to mark the agenda, the second, second week in September, I'll get that going. Okay, any questions? We'll move right into old business, approval of minutes, is there a motion to approve August 5th minutes?
I'll move.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Okay, board and committee vacancy appointments, someone like to make a motion to approve the appointments?
Yeah, I'll move that, I'll just give this all at once, man.
Okay.
I move that we appoint Peter Nasser to a three-year term on the Audit Committee, I'll move, also that we appoint Christopher Nolan to a three-year term on the Conservation Commission, and Edward Klein to the Housing Authority effective until the June 2020 town election.
One second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, I'd like to move down to the Republican election worker appointments, is there a motion to accept the recommendations of the Republican Town Committee?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay. And then I'd like to go, we'll go, we're going to skip the goal-setting and the policy so we can accommodate some of the people that are here. I'd like to start with Rebecca, our town moderator, would you like to come up and talk to us about our special town meeting tomorrow?
Good evening.
Thank you for joining us.
Oh, thanks for having me here. Welcome, as I mentioned to you before. We had a, as we do before, all of our town meetings, town staff work together to make sure that the town meetings flow very smoothly, and Mr. Monahan said, "All this for a town meeting?" He said, "You bet."
I was impressed, I was impressed.
So, and I really do appreciate the staff who participate in this because it's above and beyond, but it does make things flow much more smoothly. As you know, this particular town meeting is going to be in the auditorium. We've made arrangements to have the same setup of having the three microphones in the front. Our citizen petitioner will make a brief presentation, and then we'll go to the floor for Article 1. That requires a two-thirds majority. The next article is a simple majority, and I know the Finance Committee will make their recommendation. I should have added that with the Article 1, the planning board has made a recommendation, and they will share that at the town meeting itself. We have had one citizen submit a presentation request, I'm still reviewing that right now, and we'll get back to that person soon, but I'll be working, if it can be allowed, it would be coordinated as much as possible with LCTV. I encourage people to come to town meeting, it'll be hopefully a short one, but you never know. What questions do you have for me in preparation for this meeting? Mark?
Rebecca, the only question I have is the, a review of the five, four, five against, just because my sense is that, you know, there's going to be a whole line of people speaking on one side, nobody's speaking on the other, that's just my thought, my thinking, and at some point, you know, I think somebody's going to stand up and try to move the question, I just want to make sure we're all set on, that we can move the question before we have five and five.
Yes, so for some of you who don't know, maybe you're listening at home, we have a bylaw that limits when a motion to call the question can be offered, and calling the question doesn't itself end debate, we have to vote on that motion. However, it is not in order, according to our bylaw, until five people have spoken in favor and five have spoken against a certain issue. Now, if people read the room and see that there's a long line of people speaking on one side, and nobody ever offers to speak against it, they can usually tell how the room is feeling, and you don't need to go to one of those motions. So if you're in line, you can ask yourself, do I really need to offer any new information? Or do I have any new information to offer on this that will help the meeting understand the issue better? If you do, yes, sure, stay in line, but you should also be aware that if there is nobody who is speaking and nobody seeks to speak on the other side, then the motion to call the question can be in order. But once we do have a back and forth, then it's only after five and five. Does that clarify it, I hope?
And because this has to do with a gas company, have they contacted you about presenting anything to the town, like they respect and care what our residents think? I don't.
I have received no communication from any utility company.
Yeah, that's too bad.
Any other questions? Who's reading? Citizens are reading the one, do we have down who's reading the warrant article two?
Who's making the motion on Article two?
Yeah.
If there's a mirror in front, if there's a mirror in front.
It's me, okay, all right, I guess so, okay.
Congratulations, yes, they can win.
Okay. So we don't have to worry about passing, that's it, okay. All right, thank you very much.
Sure.
All right, I'd like to move down to the naming petition and invite you to come up, make the presentation.
Hey, Mary Beth Bergeron, 497 Inverness Lane, Long Meadow. You have a petition in front of you with, I believe, adequate signatures to come before you tonight. The purpose of this petition is to fool, primarily frankly, is because of the confusion at almost every level of the access and egress from the site of the adult center. It's difficult when you're discussing the job site to say, well, there's a one-way access road only on the west side of the property, and you can access an egress from the east side of the property. It tends to get a little confusing, and a lot of people, quite frankly, don't know north, south, east and west, and when you're looking particularly at this plan, it can get a little confusion, confusing. Combine that with the fact that there are two residents of the town now deceased who, in the opinion of a number of people, deserve some sort of recognition, and in doing this petition, it was taken into consideration that the east access road, which is an access and egress road, leads to the park, the park itself, Greenwood Park, along with the building, the old Greenwood School that is used for park and rec facilities, and we would like to see that way, named after Jim Russell, who was involved significantly with the park and rec department, having chaired the park commission for eight years and was a member for 12 years. In addition to that, he also happened to serve on the Council on Aging Board of Directors. I think all of the people here know that he was, he spearheaded the effort to build the Bill and Tennis Courts, and worked diligently for this town. He's also been a Citizen of the Year for the town of Long Meadow. On the west, on the west access road, we would like to see that access road He's also been a Citizen of the Year for the town of Long Meadow. On the west, on the west access road, we would like to see that access road named after Dr. John Carey. John Carey was a gentleman. He served on the Council on Aging Board for a very long period of time. I don't have the exact period of time, but it was in excess of 15 years. That access road accesses the Council on Aging Building. And it is one-way, it's access only, no egress. It is the shorter of the two ways to get into the adult center. And in fact, it's the only way to get in, but the egress road would come out of Russell Way. And we would like to see the Select Board utilize those names for clarification for our residents, for access and egress to the new building. It's my understanding that by prior meetings of the Select Board, having named certain areas of the town, whether it be municipal buildings, or streets, or whatever, that those are generally after deceased persons who have contributed significantly to the town. And I do believe that both of these people have, and I think that both of them represent the roads in which they would be named after. Certainly entertain, any questions?
Any questions?
I'm still trying to, I, I under, the current road that we have is what you call the east road.
Yes, the east access, right.
East access. I guess I, the west access is just a driveway in off of Maple Road into the new parking lot?
Well, it's a way to get into not only the new adult center, but also the parking for the pool and the rear playground. I believe that a copy of the map was provided.
Right, but I, it's not the greatest. I mean, I'm looking at that, Mary Beth, and I just don't.
So you have the red highlights on the two roads?
Correct. One is 200, the shorter of the two, which is the access road to the pool and the adult center and the playground.
I've considered it a driveway to some, it looks to me like, I mean, I thought it was a driveway. I understand the current roadway is a roadway that goes to the
Right.
adult center, but the other one looks all over the world like a driveway as opposed to a.
Well, it's similar to like JCC, I think Poppy Way is just the front of it, yeah.
I think it's really, quite frankly, Mr. Gold, specifically for clarification for those people who will be using that access, because they will not be able to get to the pool area from the other roadway.
So they could be told to go up Carey, if you wanna go to the pool.
They would be going, accessing up Carey Way and egressing down Russell Way. It's confusing.
No, it certainly, I'm looking at the map and it's confusing.
It is, right.
From where I see it, you could go in the other way and cut across the parking lot.
Right. They would go down, if you were going to the pool, you're taking your children to the pool, you would be parking on the right side of the property and accessing through Carey Way. Also, if you were taking your children to the playground, you'd be accessing through Carey Way and also egressing through Russell Way. So it's use of the facility for not only the Council on Aging, also the pool and also the playground. It's confusing, which is why I think at least naming them
That's the naming.
would make it clear.
That was the naming policy.
Yeah, it, no requirement of.
Did we have it in here?
Yeah. Oh, the policy?
No.
No, I didn't put the policy in. The Frank Smith Road, Jerry Nollet was just telling me was named after our town clerk.
Yes, who served the town for many, many years.
Thirty years or something.
I understand, right, right.
Yeah, that was, you know, Reynolds, Reynolds Pool is named after Harry Reynolds. I, I don't know if this is for Mary Beth or just a general discussion, and I guess the question is, how do we determine who should be honored like this? And I say this with all the respect and true love, I mean, I, you know, I'd love these two guys, I knew them both, Jim Russell and John Carey. Now, the question is though, you know, if we decide there's a naming opportunity, you know, should we just say, "Well, there's a petition, therefore we'll go with these names," or do we say, you know, Karen Michaelman served as our director of our adult center for 28 years and passed away, and maybe she's deserving of being honored this way? Or, I mean, I can think of a whole bunch of other volunteers, you know, one name that comes to my mind is Inga Stevens, Marina Bolduc, who, you know, and so the question is, how do, you know, not only how do you determine whether, but how do you, how do you sort through the list of all the people whose names are on plaques and who've helped and served on the Parks and Rec Board over the many, many years? And I don't have an answer, but I do think that, in my opinion, that it's, you know, the first name that comes to mind on a petition may not be that best, best way to do it, if you're really looking at who.
That's our policy, and it went in front of the Parks and Rec Board as well as the COA.
Is that anybody who can petition for anything?
Yeah, if they get 200 people and the boards still agree with them.
It's a petition, but that doesn't mean the policy is, "And we will accept those petitions."
No, you can say, if you feel these are inappropriate names, you can vote no.
I'm not saying they're not appropriate, the question is, you know, we've got a new facility going in, it's an adult center, and, you know, and here we are in the fifth hour of a, you know, 24-hour project kind of thing, and we're making a determination not having gone through the, and these names may in fact come to the top, but, you know, I just, without any thought at all, throughout two other names that I think ought to have had consideration, maybe they were, but I don't know that they were.
Are you saying you wanna spend some time thinking about it till the next meeting?
It's not till the next meeting, I think we ought to put together a group of people who, who look at, I mean, if we truly have a naming opportunity in town, we ought to come up with a system of saying, "Who do we, who do we wanna honor?" I'm not saying these folks aren't deserving of it, I think they, they may very well be. But, you know, maybe we decide that we're gonna take this opportunity and name three or four or five things throughout town. But all I'm saying is that, that, you know, just because there's a petition that has two names doesn't make them the most appropriate people, naming, you know.
But why did you write, you were the one who encouraged the policy?
For consideration, not for necessarily naming.
Yeah, it was called the naming policy.
But it wasn't intended for, in my opinion, when it was developed, it was for rooms and, it wasn't for streets and buildings.
Well, I'll pull up the policy next time.
Might help, yeah, just like the comment, you know, 'cause we mentioned a couple of the, you know, Harry Reynolds, and we mentioned Frank Smith, and, and, you know, if we think of the names that were used for streets in town, Rely Williams and so forth, and if, if, if they're not really truly representative of our town, you know, in terms of, if they're all males, for example, you know, then you start thinking, "Well, what is wrong with the women in the town who put a lot of energy into this town? Why aren't they considered for names for things?" And, and, you know, I think that would be another thing to look at, you know, and I think about Mark, his point, you know, you know, he takes the hard stand to step up and say, you know, like, you know, "Here's two guys that everyone loves," and he says, "Well, are we really making the right decision?" That's not an easy thing to do, Mark, I appreciate you doing it. But is everything gonna be named after white, old white men in this town? You know, not that I have anything against them, because I am one, but, but, you know, there should be some diversity.
Well, there was discussion.
There was discussion about opportunities, and specifically gender-related, obviously, to naming opportunities, and, you know, Shirley Inger Bolduc and Karen Michaelman would both be appropriate women to name anything after, and my understanding is that we will be honoring Karen Michaelman on the inside of the building. And frankly, Inger Bolduc certainly could be named, although I'm not sure how many people really remember her.
Shame on us.
Yeah, I agree, she worked very hard. For me, I will tell you, for me, the main goal here is clarification of access and egress to the, to the areas where people are supposed to go, rather than even at the Building Committee and in discussions with the OPM, you know, describing it, "Well, the west, the west entrance and the east entrance," just, it's confusing to people.
But for the duration of the construction, we could put up temporary signs that say, "West entrance and east entrance."
I'm not so concerned about the duration of the construction, I'm more concerned about afterwards with our elders and our citizens going in and out.
And I agree with you, and I think that there's, but again, I, my, my take on it, there's an opportunity to, to look at this and say, you know, go back 50 years down to Long Meadow, and who might be the most deserving people to, and, and I think Jim Russell's name and John Carey's name will be right up there with them. I just think.
So you're recommending we fight, we create a task force to decide the naming, even though the policy says, it starts with the petition, and then we decide whether we're going to accept or not accept the recommendations of the petition. I think we have to decide on the petition. And if you're deciding to vote down the petition, then you, then I would say you could start the task force, but the petition's in front of us, that I think according to the policy you helped write, we're supposed to make a decision on.
Well, it's not voting down a petition, it's voting down the recommendations of the petition for further explore, 'cause if you do listen to the points, they're all valid, that we have a lot of people in our community that could take recognition regardless of the sex. And I understand, Tom, you're right, it's all white males, no doubt about it, but it brings up a good point, because it only happens once. We're not gonna change these names again. So it is a fairly important decision to be made in our community. And I'm concerned, I just wonder if it's, if there's a way to expand it where it's not just the opinion of this Select Board on whose names should be on these roads. I mean, how do we get public input, how do we get a sense?
Well, that's the 200 signatures.
200 inputs.
Come on, I can get 200 signatures, some more.
Though that, that would be your prerogative, if you wanted to nominate somebody, you get 200 signatures, sorry, sorry.
What I'm saying is that we have a lot of people in this community, these names were presented by somebody on a petitioner's list. They were the only two names that they had on the list. This did not go through a vetting process where they had 50 names and they dwindled down of these 200 petitioners, said, "These are the ones we want," that's what I'm talking about. It's what is the democratic process that involves, these are representative decisions of our entire community, instead of two petitioners that go with signatures and the five-person Select Board. That's my only concern. Is it truly what the community wants, Tom?
May I? So I, I think, I agree with everybody, I think that if Mary Beth followed the existing policy for naming, I think that these two names are in front of the board for a vote. I think if we want to amend the policy, we should amend the policy moving forward. I don't think we should impact this effort on the fly without having a formal change in our policy.
Yeah, I guess I agree with you, you know, that if this is the policy, people follow the policy, you know, we shouldn't pull a rug on other people, it's under their feet at this point.
And then we should look to change the policy, to say, "It's not being done by petition anymore, but by a committee."
Well, we don't have.
And then the committee would just, again, be a small number of people.
When was the last time this opportunity was presented to the Select Board?
Well, this is the first time under this new policy.
Yeah, when's the last time it was presented?
Since I've been on 2011, there's never been.
Any?
The only last time I remember the discussion is when the tennis courts, there was a consideration.
Yeah, I've got nine or eight, nine years, it's never been presented, so this is not something that comes up every, every year.
The Jim Russell tennis courts.
No, we're not talking about that, we're talking about the naming rights on the roads and all that.
Oh, the roads, no, but the tennis courts, we voted that down.
Right.
Yeah, so it did come in front of us.
And I, I don't have a feeling, you're right, these are very strong people, I mean, just undisputable. It's just that, you know, Mark did bring up a good point, on some of the other people in this town that have had very significant, direct involvement at their facilities, and that seems like it warrants a lot of attention, too. And I've not heard any discussion about anybody else being nominated for this, it's just that these two names, Tom, okay?
Well, no, I think there was a lot of discussion on the boards on who the names might be.
Okay, I'm saying, I didn't, haven't heard that.
Well, see, the problem we have is that, I sat here in this, this boardroom while we decide on this policy, that, Mark, you were spearheading, and one of the reasons you picked the 200, you said, "This can't just come from a small group of people, this has to come from the community." So if we don't feel 200's enough, do we have to say, "All naming thing has to go on a ballot?"
There are valid points.
Or what, how else do you encourage, I mean, a task force is just six people.
Well, I guess we have to understand, these, these issues can be driven by one person anyway, or two people.
Yes.
Regardless, that's the way it works.
And then we are the ones who, our job was to say, "Hold it, we don't want these, there's something about these people that don't fit the mold of Long Meadow," so we were sort of like the gatekeepers from someone saying some horrible person was going to be.
Process can never be as pure as we want it to be.
So why can't we can't find the naming policy, and I thought we had them all?
It's like when they pick the king and the queen of the high school prom. Are they really the top people, or do they have a lot of friends who stuff the ballots?
Did you have, you don't have the policy?
I don't.
Yeah.
The original policy for naming of the adult center rooms was no signatures required, but to name the building, it was 200 signatures. My understanding is, the original policy for naming of streets and anything else in town required 50 signatures, and we've obviously way exceeded that number. And I understand your concern, Mark, and unfortunately, or unfortunately, you do have a lot of very strong people in this town who work very diligently and very hard for the benefit of the residents, and people who are deceased, which is, again, by, by custom, the Select Board typically has named areas after people who are deceased, or stones are erected, or whatever, again, after people who are deceased. And so in going through that list, we, we discussed different people and felt that those two were the, amongst many, certainly, you know, hundreds probably, of people who would be deserving of having a street named after them, or a way, this is really not a street, it's a way or a lane, or whatever, ultimately you decide you want to call it, these two people were appropriate for the access to the areas.
Yeah, this, this comes back to the discussion that I had with the board member, I'm Citizen of the Year Award versus an Award of Lifetime Achievement.
Correct.
Because a lot of times Citizen of the Year Award is not appropriate for the people that we give it to, they, they should have a Lifetime Achievement Award in our community, 'cause they maybe didn't do anything this particular year, but they've had a lifetime of service to our community, 30-some, 40-some years.
Sure.
It's, I still think it's a thing that we have to warm up to, so I'd like to play the motion on the floor, that we adopt the resolution as submitted. A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you, and do you want me to bring this back up on a future agenda for a policy change? It would hurt too much?
We'd like you won't have another opportunity for another 15 years, Mary.
Oh, I don't know, the women are now gonna come out and say, "Where's our streets?"
That's true.
Maybe that alley that we're now having to flatten will be named after a woman.
Okay, that'll be your motion, so that's not.
If I could just say that I would like to have a clarification, whether you want them named ways, or streets, or lanes, or.
Ways?
Ways.
I like ways.
'Cause they're not official streets or driveways.
Correct, right.
The male address, I guess the male address would still be Maple Road, correct?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Thank you very much, yes, yeah, 231 Maple Road. Now, I do know that someone came before at the, at the construction meeting, not last week, but the week before, I think it was the police chief, requested a number, because the 231 Maple Road is the old school building. He wanted a number for the Council on Aging so that it would be clarified on documents, and he has chosen a number. It's an odd number, somewhere between 216 and 231.
Right.
And I honestly say, it's like 219 or something, but he's chosen that number.
And we don't do anything, the post office does that.
No, no, right.
Okay, we're.
Mary Beth, is there any way that Jim Russell Way could be, you know, they could use perhaps chalk and make it really colorful every, once a year?
It's lime green and yellow and orange. We're gonna hang a jacket underneath the sign, right?
Get some chalk, you know.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Well, we'll move on to the DPW, capital planning.
So hopefully in your packet, you were given a quarterly report of before, you got Mr. Strange, Mario Mazur, you're DPW Director, I don't know that we've met before. And I think in the past, we usually run through this, sometimes by question from you guys, sometimes you ask me to explain things, I don't know exactly how you wanna do it today, but I'm open to any of those forms, so you wanna guide me? I'm open to any of those forms, so you want to guide me?
Before we start, can I just ask you a question from the packet?
Sure.
The infiltration report, it sounds like they completed it, the actual studies last fall, and you've been waiting months.
They are working on a final report for us, which.
How long does that take?
There's really no deadline on it, it doesn't take that long. I think they've been busy with other work, and we haven't really been pushing them because we haven't needed the information for anything. So I have pushed them, and we should get that soon.
Okay, thank you.
Marie, as long as we're asking unrelated questions. Today's storm kind of. We, just so people at home know, about a year or so ago, maybe a little bit more, our, our gas facility, our fuel facility. At the DPW yard failed.
Right.
And we made a decision not to invest in a new one since we'd soon be moving, and instead we now buy it through one of the commercial. Gas stations in town. That, you know, a tree came down near.
Mobile station.
What, what, do we have a backup if they lose power?
We do, and so it's not one particular vendor, it's not one gas station, I think you noticed a lot of DPW trucks there because it's close to us. You can go to anyone in, I think Du England, so it's more of a regional type of program.
All right, thank you.
You still have to put in your employee ID number and the mileage, so there's reasonability, you can't just randomly put in numbers.
Right, but we're not dependent upon one gas station.
We are not.
Okay, thanks, interesting.
So we don't get Andy tonight?
No.
No, we won't get Andy.
So.
Andy's getting ready to leave, I was hoping, I sort of squeezed this in so we could get the last shot at Andy.
Has everybody been notified that Andy has given his notice, has accepted a position, okay, so if we want to start there, we can. In the past, we've had some difficulty recruiting for that position.
Yeah.
And so talking with interim town manager, we have engaged three different engineering firms to give us on-call quotes. And those are due this week, and my plan is to use them for the time that we're without an engineer, for whatever functions we need. Whether it's design of a project, construction oversight, or whatever. And so that's the plan going forward, we'll see how that works, we did post a position, I think it was on Friday, it'll be up for two weeks. Hopefully we'll get some folks to apply, we'll review them, interview them, and see if they fit, if they do, great, if not, we'll put it back up.
But at least if it doesn't, we have the backup of having contracted services available to us to keep projects moving in the short term.
Any questions? I guess I'll start.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm a little confused on where we are, and I, the reports are very thorough, but they, I get lost in the weeds because they go back for years. So I'm talking about Long Meadow Street project, and I think we sort of talked offline, but.
So.
So where is it, because Stephen said it was divided in half.
Right.
And we were only doing one half of it.
Right.
And that's at twenty, so tell me the half that's been approved by TIP for twenty twenty-three.
So let me, and my mistake, there's a typo in this report, and it's twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
TIP, we are doing what DPW and town manager has been calling the Long Meadow L. Which is Route Five as it comes in from Springfield, that horse park.
Okay.
And it, it goes to Converse Street, and then Converse to Laurel, so there's three intersections there.
Right.
That you may remember, we got money for, for the MGM mitigation, eight hundred and some odd thousand. So we're using some of that money for the design work of those intersections, there's also some widening in certain places, bike lanes, things like that. And so that project is at about twenty-five percent, so we hired a consultant to design that for us. They brought it to twenty-five percent, we submit it to the state, the state does their review, once they're done with their review, they do a design public hearing with the town. We coordinate it together in town. And so at that point, residents can come, and they can ask questions, or make recommendations, and then they try to build those into the other seventy-five percent of the design, and then the final design.
I thought we already had that, they came in front of us.
Those are preliminary plans, those are concepts.
And so we never got to the public hearing.
Frankly, those are dead on arrival, I thought.
Yeah.
Public hearing will be, I thought it was going to be this summer, but it's looking like this fall.
Okay.
And that's driven by DOT.
And then we'll go to seventy-five percent.
After we get the comments from the residents, design public hearing, they take those into consideration, they finish designing the rest of the seventy-five percent. And then there's a seventy-five, hundred percent submission, approval, bidding, and then construction.
Okay, so now where my confusion lies, is you keep talking in a lot of your reports about the paving project from Converse South.
Converse South is a separate project that we're pursuing. Richard helped us get a hundred thousand dollars at town meeting to do survey, which is like step one of that process. So we're at twenty-five percent of the L project, this is at like one percent, just to kind of put numbers, I'm making up numbers, but that's.
But one of the things we were hoping to do was to change all of the lighting going to, all the way to the border.
You will.
Even with the paving project, we'll be dealing with our intersections?
Yes, they do everything, sidewalks, everything that's.
Oh, okay, because when you say paving, I think you just mean you're putting a paving on, so you're talking about finishing the design.
Exactly like Converse Street, if you can think of that.
So it's, just like the L, you're going to take it all the way south?
Correct.
All right.
But think of Converse Street from Laurel to Dwight, we did a new intersection at Dickinson, new set traffic signals, paving, new sidewalks, bike lanes, same, same thing.
Okay, so if you do the L, the L's at twenty twenty-four, we're just starting this, there's no way we can catch this project up to do it all at once? Or you don't want to do it all at once?
Um, I'd love to do it at once, it would be a big project for the TIP. I'm guessing the south of Long Meadow, not the L, is probably a ten million dollar project. I don't know what the whole number is for Western Mass, but they usually don't put that big a number into one project, they usually try to break it up. I'm not saying they, they don't ever do that, because they certainly do, but they try to give everybody a little piece of it. And so that one may even have to be phased, I'm not sure, but we'll see.
Okay, and then when I do attend those TIP meetings, they always say at the end of the year, or when they go through the project, all right, who's got something at seventy-five percent?
Right.
We got extra money on the table.
The credit to Richard, because that's exactly what he's, wants us to do is.
Okay.
Get it to, we're ready, we're shovel ready, and hopefully something falls off a year before. The year it gets programmed for, this one's not even programmed yet, but let's say twenty twenty-five for fun. If the twenty twenty-three falls off, and we're ready to go with this project or another, and it fits the dollar amount, we could get it done.
And do we have other smaller projects that we're trying to get to seventy-five percent, so we'll have them?
No.
In the barrel, ready to go?
L's number one, Long Meadow South, or Route Five South is number two.
But sometimes them number that they say, oh, we got half a million dollars left on the table.
Whenever, I don't think they do things that small, I think they're two, three million dollar projects fall off, that's where they look for something equal or lesser value.
Okay.
What is, what is the next TIP project after South?
I think we talked about Shaker Road, but we haven't really.
Do we have a long range forecast on TIP?
Uh, not beyond that, no.
I mean, is there, I've never seen a document that shows what you're going to do with TIP, do you?
Those are, those are only two projects that are, we've engaged a TIP.
So there's no long range.
No.
Okay, now you're cert, you're doing survey, I guess Andy was trying to get estimates, you're going to do the survey this year?
We have two to three estimates already, yes, the plan is to do it this fall. Waiting on the third, based on fee, we'll make a determination, and then from there, we'll put a contract together and award it to somebody, and then we'll go to the next step.
Are you going to be shepherding our projects at the meetings until we get a new engineer in?
Yes, myself or engineering staff, but one of us plans on being there.
Okay.
Mark?
Yeah, Mario, a couple of questions, one is about the, about some of the biggest issues that I hear is road paving and prioritization. I saw in your, your monthly report for June that you put out, put out the bid, you know, how do you determine what's next? And how can we get public, get input into what's next?
I wouldn't want to touch that piece of it, Mark, but.
Well, well, but people, people want to say, everybody thinks their road's the worst one in town, and I'll share my email with you if you, if you doubt that, I mean.
No, I get them too.
Your road's not the worst one.
Mine, no, not, my road is not the worst one in town, but, but the, but the fact is that, you know, people want to know. That there's a, a plan, that there's a multi-year plan, and, and, you know, and, and sometimes things change, like we have a tough winter and a road just disintegrates. And this year, we were able to do an awful lot of spot paving to some of the sections that were just terrible.
So you may remember years ago, predates me, PVPC Pioneer Valley Planning Commission came in and did a study of the whole town, and they gave us that exact document. From there, and that's kind of been the backbone of our five to ten year plan, we've kind of followed that with the exceptions that you just talked about. Roads unravel for different reasons, like William Street, for example, I don't think was on that, but it's going to be done this fall because of the issues we had this past winter. I think Maple Road's the next one for next year, just based on what I saw this year, it's not going to get better next year. I don't think that was on the list either, Maple from Hazardville to Shaker. So some of it is that list, and we follow that, some of it is what we see in the field. I really think we should engage somebody like PVPC again, and update that document, and then we'll have a better five-year, ten-year plan, but it's, that's what we've been doing.
I mean, the people, I just, if I just follow, I mean, the people who drive our roads every day are A, citizens, but B, our police department and our DPW. I gotta believe that you get input from.
Of course we do.
The DPW drivers and the police department that said, these roads are falling in terms of moving things up and down.
Some of it's our main roads, which, you know, may have a bunch of potholes.
But potholes are potholes.
That's what I meant, but we get a lot of complaints because they get a lot of traffic, and then you have a residential road that maybe has ten homes on it, none of them call. But it's a worse condition road, so it's a balancing act of, one, how much money do we have, how do we fit it into the budget, and then three, where's the best bet?
I mean, I'm, I'm mostly talking about the roads that are literally turned to gravel.
Yeah.
The, the system that you used this past, this, this spring to clear major sections has done wonders, I can, I mean, I can really see that it's. I don't know how long that stuff's going to last, it lasted the winter, but it's helped, but people need to understand the process.
That's the process, I'm open to input on that, but that's what's worked for us. Like I said, I'd like to have that document updated, but it's a cost.
The problem is, what's worked for the DPW may not be working for some residents who think that there's, you know, who all think their street's the worst. And I, I just wish there was a, some way of saying, we have this, this PVPC document, and every year or two, our town engineer uses such and such a criteria. And adds things and moves things down, whatever it is, but that doesn't sound to be.
Yeah, that's it, it's just not as formal as that, but yes.
All right, thank you.
Richard?
Yeah, we had a pavement management system brought in.
Right, it was part of Cartograph.
Right, is, are we still inputting into that?
It doesn't work, it never really worked the way that it was intended to, I don't know that we bought the right model, or we paid the right fees to get the model we needed to do what it, it needed to do. I've seen it work that way in a different community, but it doesn't work that way here, and.
What, what system is Pioneer Valley Planning Commission using?
I don't know what to use.
Because that's the report we got.
We got a report.
They did a survey on it, okay.
But it wasn't a dynamic one, we couldn't add in potholes, and then the OCI.
Right.
Be adjusted based on us, you know, filling up.
But there's also, you can also have a van come in and run our roads.
Right, that's what I was talking about.
Yeah, that, that's a fantastic system, I think they can do it in, what, a week or so?
Yep, just a matter of.
Twenty-five thou or so?
Uh, I thought I heard something like fifteen, but may, maybe it's a different outfit.
Wouldn't, wouldn't that be a beneficial cost though of our, our engineering overall money to do that study, at least every three years?
I agree, I think so.
Uh, okay, specifically, I had, I had another question too, by the way. Your department is, is started a venture of, it's, it's taken about two, three years to get it going, of, of doing smearing, I call it smearing asphalt. And you, you'll see it throughout our community.
Large patches.
It's a wonderful maintenance thing, and you're going to extend those areas like in two to three, four, five years that you smear, because it looks like it's a hot patch you're putting down. And I guess your director of, of what, roads is instrumental in getting that equipment in here to do that. He should be congratulating on that effort, because that is, that is the first concerted effort that we've seen, that I've seen in this town in ten years, to really do maintenance on the roads. To, you know, in a professional type fashion.
I agree with you, and I will relay that message though.
And then that's, that's just not putting tack oil down, that's really putting a seal on it, they may blister off, but we'll see, time is out, but the effort's there. I know when talking to your engineer, that Bliss Road drainage is a major problem.
Yes.
It, like the couple million dollar project, it's a major one, apparently there's some really critical flaws in the design. And, and also the grassy gutter that you have plans and specs developed right now to do grassy gutter.
Right, million two, I think.
Yeah, which is in the tune of about a million dollars within, and I think they've already worked up an estimate, they don't have an estimate on the Bliss Road drainage, but it's a major project. I had chatted with Marie, I was hoping to.
Yes.
Try to do a Warren article, but we've got stuff that's slamming up against us that. But, you know, in the very near future, we're going to have to start addressing some of these needs that they're bringing up, because they, they're not going to get done by TIP.
No.
And we don't get enough money in our chapter ninety to do it, chapter ninety just barely covers the maintenance costs.
And your drainage is usually partly from the fee and partly from general funds, so.
But, you know, the purpose of this meeting, why we wanted Andy to come in, was to bring those projects in, to start to introduce them to the public and to the board, so they're aware. There are some major problems out there that we don't hear about. You know, we're not on Bliss Road when it floods, we don't know that you got twenty-four inches going into a sixteen inch color, like we had on Merryweather.
Right.
And which was finally corrected. So I, I'm a proponent in getting this out to the public, in this room, when I say to the public. And, and seminars, and letting the board to see it, so I would, I would really welcome you guys to come back in the near future and bring those projects in, so we know what they, we know they're out there.
Sure.
Actually, we're just, you just got safe routes to school, and you're doing Bliss, isn't it, you're putting like a half a million dollars into Bliss?
They, yes, but not into the roads, it's more into sidewalks, crosswalks, flashing beacons.
Which we might want to re-discuss here.
Hey, by all means, and I know tomorrow it'll be discussed in a bigger form.
I'm not sure if we're ready for a bump in Bliss.
It doesn't, that is a twenty twenty-three project as well, so we got some time for that.
Oh, because I thought the money was coming in this year.
No.
Okay, all right, all right, because, so you're talking that won't be involving the roads, because I hate to, if we're going to be redoing those roads, to go put in expensive crosswalks.
We are not redoing the roads, the drainage that I think Richard's referring to is across Bliss Road, but I think it, it backs up on Blueberry Hill. School parking lot, for sure.
Oh, yeah, I see that all the time, all the time.
That leads, I believe, across Bliss, through Russell, uh, the high school field, and then eventually into Merryweather.
Right.
But I get the sense that some of those pipes are undersized and capacity issues, we have not televised them yet to know if that's the only problem, I'm not sure if there's blockage or collapse or another issue. We're going to investigate that first, and that's why Andy and the rest are not here, because I don't have enough information to tell you what the problem is, or how much it's going to cost to fix.
But you, you like, you do have enough on grassy gutter though, because you've got plans.
Yeah, grassy gutter has been put together, and like I said, I think it's a million or a million two.
Yeah, Mario, we just received a letter from a resident on Knollwood.
Yeah, I talked to her.
Which is right by the school.
Yep.
And, and they were wondering about sidewalks, is that scheduled?
It, it has not. Putting new sidewalks in, I, I, you know, that's a great idea. I've mostly been focused on fixing what's broken, so not exactly sure how to go about that, I, it was my recommendation to, I can't remember her name, Rebecca. It was her first name, I can't remember her last name, to do that, to get the support of her neighbors, and if there was enough support, then, you know, present it to the town manager and the select board. And if they all felt that that was the right thing to do, we'd build it for them, but it is not a request that I've moved forward. I certainly could add it to next year's capital project as a, a capital sidewalk request, I don't know what the cost would be, I didn't look at it in any detail. But from what she described to me, and I haven't witnessed it, I haven't been out there at, at school closing, or opening, I don't know if opening is an issue too, but. There's a lot of traffic there, kids don't have an opportunity to cross, but a sidewalk would help. Seem like a valid.
Yeah, for those who may not be aware, Knollwood runs right next to Will Swamp School, Grammar School. And now, did recently do something, adding a sidewalk by Blueberry School, like last year, did, did that happen?
No, they just re, they fixed it.
Was it a request to add?
No, there was a request on Linwood.
Right.
About two years ago, and Linwood hasn't come up, and that's a cut through.
Right, same type of issue, not an existing sidewalk. Talk about, because it's, obviously kids ride their bikes and walk to school, makes some sense to maybe put one in, but like I said, my focus has been mostly repairing what's there, not adding to what we already have.
Okay, yeah, just as long as we're consistent with our approach, you know, thank you, thank you.
Mark?
Mario, some questions about project management and, and scheduling, and not necessarily the ones that show up here, I mean, we, you know, but one of my concerns is. I mean, we, you know, but one of my concerns is I've been driving to work every day and with, during the summer particularly, I cut across grassy gutter in the morning. And for most of the, the summer and this late spring and early summer, two of the three storm sewers had a cone in them because they've collapsed. Cones have been removed and now they're really, really collapsed. And my thought is, so now are we going to start repairing those things now that school starts? When we had all summer to, to potentially fix those on, because grassy gutter is a three-ring circus.
No doubt about it.
From eight in the morning or from seven-thirty in the morning until three o'clock in the afternoon. And yet, we have two really, really bad storm sewers out here that need to be repaired. And that, they're, they're nowhere on the project necessarily.
No, those aren't capital project.
They're not capital projects.
Those are just DPW work.
But when, are they going to get scheduled and how?
In fact, we are
You know, is there any way we could have done that, prioritize that during the summer so that we weren't, at this point, it's, school starts next week.
No guarantee that it's going to happen this fall either. It could be scheduled on
Something's got to be done because there's going to be accidents.
I'm not telling you we're not going to do it. I'm just telling you that.
No, no, what I'm saying, but there needs to be something temporary. I mean, there are going to be cars falling into the, I mean, it's got to be, what? Nine, ten inches
I'll have to look at that. I don't
Drop on those storm sewers?
I haven't driven those to know for sure, but we engaged a contractor because we were falling behind to help us with some of that work. And in some cases, it's lateral that's collapsed. In other cases, it's the actual catch basin, the brick and mortar that's falling apart. And in some cases, they got to be removed. Some places, they can be repaired. And we just have a lot of that work. Our infrastructure's old, as I've said in previous meetings. It needs a lot of care. It's, it's gonna
And I'm, and I'm not questioning that. I guess my, my question is, somebody from the DPW saw this enough to put cones in it.
Yep.
And realized, there's got to be some connection that, hey, this needs to be done. The summer's coming. Should we move these up to do them during the summer as opposed to do them in the fall? Or, you know, in the middle of the wintertime or something like that?
Fair point. I will tell you that generally speaking, it is more of a oldest-first type of thing. They've been waiting the longest. But certainly, the ones around the school should have some priority.
Who's doing the scheduling on that?
Our same person you just gave credit to, the Streets Division.
So it's in the, it's in that division they're doing it on schedule?
Highway Division.
Probably a little bit off track, but North End Interceptor, where are we with that? When do you feel you want to put that on?
That is probably going to be a spring project. I anticipate going back to town meeting in the fall for easements.
Okay.
We did the, you know, the, the money piece of it at May Town Meeting. That was approved. Now, I think there's five, but don't hold me to that. There's something like five or six properties affected where we're going to have to do the engineering work, get the permanent easements. Obviously, then it has to go to Town Meeting for approval. Assuming that all passes, then we can bid the project and probably build it in the spring.
Okay. Any other questions for?
Is it, you don't want this, this fall?
This fall meeting. Yes, that's the plan.
Anything else? And so you would like to have that audit of the roads done?
Yes. We've talked about it internally. It was
How soon would you want to start that? Spring Town Meeting, Fall Town Meeting? When do you? You won't get to it till the spring probably, right?
No, I, I think potentially it's Fall Town Meeting. I'd have to get a, a price for what it is. I'm not even sure what qualifies it. I don't know.
I think it's, right, it's only going to qualify as a caper, so it'll be a separate standalone.
It's usually one of those things where you just kind of find the money, right, or ask to have.
We can do it at, at the Fall Town Meeting. We just would take it out of whatever source, but we can do it then.
So I think that's a possibility.
That'd like to be a pretty popular item. People want to do an asphalt survey. They're thinking they're going to get their street paid.
Well, that's, that's the downside of it is if, you know, your street's number one on the list, but something happens where the funding doesn't show up.
But that's the thing. If you do this kind of a report and you develop it, Mario's right. I mean, you would want to be targeting it for, on a regular basis to update it. Otherwise, you're sitting there four, five years, six years later saying, I remember that. So if you commit yourself to doing it, you want to think about every three years or whatever, on a regular basis, we want to come back and we want to update that just so we stay current because circumstances are going to change as you work your way through.
Right. But in terms of saving money for the town, like you say, we have police officers, you know, driving down every street in town. If you asked them to give you a list of the top fifteen streets, they'd give it to you.
No time at all.
And it could change from year to year, but we wouldn't have to pay fifteen thousand dollars.
But in total, total honesty, Tom, they're not, they're not asphalt engineers. They're not, they're not trained.
They're as qualified as the rest of us as citizens.
Tom, believe me, they just know they hit a pothole, but they don't know that there's a major failure there that they can see a drainage system going on. That's not what we pay them for. I, I understand your point, but it, it really, you're crossing over. It seems like having engineers come in to be cops.
Right. Well, I mean, they, they drive down the roads. We're not the highest crime area, you know, so they come look at the streets.
I mean, to some of your guys' point, I think I'd rather have the official document. I, I wouldn't want to say, you know, Officer so-and-so told me this was the worst street. That's why we're doing his street, not yours.
I mean, what they're giving you in those kind of reports is they're giving you a rational basis for their recommendation. That doesn't mean you can't take that report and then say, okay, I get it. But we are visualizing that we need to make some modifications. But at least it's an overall framework to evaluate the overall condition. So if you get these kind of questions or why is it my road or this and that, you at least have done your due diligence to prep for, preparing to be responsive to it.
Well, and the true benefit is you can come before this board in town, you can tell them how bad the asphalt is, how much money you really need to fix it. And you also have a trend analysis where you can see a road starting to fail. And then you get into the logic, the fact that you're supposed to spend your money on the best roads you have.
There's an argument that, absolutely, sure.
And it's a hard concept for people to understand, but that really is
Especially that guy who's number one on that list because his street is so bad. How can you keep putting money on that nice road?
But if you cross-reference it with people who know, like the officers know where the sections are that flood out.
Yep.
And, and, you know, you drive all over with something, you may not realize the flooding potential of certain areas of the town either.
Well, we're finding out today. Well, thank you very much. I really appreciate you coming in.
Thanks.
Alright, so we have fifteen minutes to finish up after all the other items.
We do. Yes.
So, a, regarding Pioneer Valley Planning Commission alternate, Walter Gunn is our primary and it's usually the town manager is the alternate. Jay's got a lot on his plate. So we were looking to put someone in for just a couple of months.
Do we get any input from the PV, from, from the planning board?
I was telling, I was talking to Walter informally after the planning board and he says it's usually the town manager, you know, again, he's usually at all, every meeting. I think that Walter is the chair right now.
Right, but if it's not going to be the planning committee, the, the town manager ought to be somebody who has a half a sense of what's going on in planning, which would, especially if it's temporary.
Yeah.
Well, we were, we're mentioning, Mark might be a possibility. He's got, that's what he does for a living, but do you feel there's a conflict?
Yeah, I don't know. I, I think if you, if you drill down, I don't think there is a conflict. In Agawam, we, we have our planning board chair as our, as our, as our designated member. And then we have another planning board member as the alternate. I think that makes a lot of sense. Obviously, we have a different form of government. I'm happy to do it if, if nobody else will step up. But my recommendation would be go back to the planning board and have them assign somebody else.
So are you saying no if we appoint you for the next few months? Or should we, do we throw it on Jay?
Either way, whatever you want.
But I also think that Walter Gunn has done a great job and
Oh, Walter's our primary.
And I hope he'll stay here forever, but it would be nice to have someone else on the committee, on the board that
No, this is only, Walter doesn't show up because Walter's chair.
Oh, they wouldn't attend at all.
No, yeah, so if Walter can't make it, we just need an alternate to show up. Is that right?
It's an alternate, yeah.
Yes.
So is there a motion to put on Mark or Jay for the next few months?
Jay doesn't want to do it.
So is there a motion to put Mark on?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to put Mark on.
Is there a second?
Well, didn't Mark say it would be better to go back and take somebody from the planning board?
Yeah, but he said it's a different form of government. I'm just, planning's really got their hands full.
If it's temporary, it's temporary. It's temporary.
Alright, so do people feel they want me to go back to planning and get Don Holland or someone to do it?
I was just asking a question. I, I, Don or, what are you saying, Mark?
I was willing to help, but I, I think my opinion, best practice would be have somebody from the planning board because they're, they're, they're in it. I, I, I do planning, but I am not on the long-term planning board. So I feel like somebody from the planning board would be better suited. Having said that, if the board would like to be the alternate, I'm happy to be the alternate.
So how does the board feel?
Ask Don, ask some, ask Walter Gunn, who from the planning board ought to be an alternate for the next six months.
Alright, I'll let, so we agreed to let Walter Gunn choose as alternate, so it doesn't have to come back here. Because we don't even appoint Walter.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll let Walter Gunn decide that.
And if he wants a select board member, he can go for it.
Alright, sounds good. Our block party, is there a motion to approve the block party for East Greenwich?
So moved. I haven't brought it up yet, but I'll move on.
Is there a second?
No second.
Any discussion?
This is, this is for October sixth.
October sixth through the seventh.
Alright. Rain date?
None.
None? Okay, all those in favor? Now we'll move down to the budget schedule. I asked Paul to put this on because it's, it's going to be a strange year. And I wanted to figure out how we were going to be doing this.
Well, I basically looked at last year's and basically just updated to make sure that the Mondays align with the correct date. So it's very similar to prior years. There are a couple of typos on here which I have rectified. Anyway, this would be the annual town meeting of May twentieth, two thousand twenty, not nineteen, as is, as was one of the errors that I did notice up there. I, I don't know. It's very, again, it's very similar to what we've done in the past. We've met with Chairman Metz regarding the capital program and that timetable. We did amend that date to December eleventh instead of the thirteenth. That would be one change that would be made in the final product.
Can I see it? Because I did, I'm going to be in trouble pulling mine out. Thanks.
Here, here's
You have an extra?
Yeah, there, and, and I tried to highlight the areas that we changed from what's in your packet. I've asked Tom Mazza to review the timetable for the school budget. That's always a, a critical timeframe. We're right around the same time. Last year, it might have been like the thirteenth of February. I have not had any response, but I don't, I don't anticipate there being much of a difference. This would give the select board the budget just before their first March meeting, which they would then have some interaction with it on the March second select board meeting. Again, just similar to prior years, sets up the timetable for the whole budget process. Budget to be approved and a warrant signed by March sixteenth. That would give time to, for the finance committee to make their recommendations by the end of the month, to get to the printer. So it's all printed and sent, sent off to the, delivered to the residents. Other than that, I don't know what else to say on it. It's, again, it's very similar to prior years. The only other thing that I would add is I also did put in October twenty-first as the joint select board meeting with the school committee and the finance committee. October eighth would be the initial review of the budget assumptions that Jay and I would prepare, that we would look at a draft budget at that point in time.
Well, do you want the directives before, I mean, for us to look at directives before then, or did you want us to do it all in the eighth?
If you have ideas before then, you know, that would be fine, so I could incorporate them into the eighth. If not, I'm going to go forward with the eighth and I would amend them before we got to the twenty-first.
So maybe the second meeting in September, we'll, we'll talk directives.
Marie, why did you say that this year was going to be unusual?
Because I wanted to, if we have a switch-out in the town managers in beginning of November, that's right in the middle of the budget season and we should see if we needed to accelerate something or decelerate some of the issues. And that's why I wanted everyone to look at this ahead of time.
I, I
Especially Jay, see where he's comfortable with it.
I mean, I, I think the bigger issue may be the capital because that's like right in the middle of the capital. We did make a commitment to, to Dr. Metz that we would have it done. So we will do, well, we made a commitment, we'll have it done.
Assuming I'm here, I have no difficulty in making recommendations and working with Paul and coming forward with, based on the criteria and the factors and just presenting those to the board. That's fine.
I mean, I think the biggest key is for us to get those out at, at the deadlines that we set, which would be September twentieth. It was mentioned at the department head meeting already this morning. So departments should actually have their wheels turning on, on what they're going to be requesting. But again, the formal documentation will not go out till a couple of weeks from now.
Okay. And what about, when does capital, when should capital present to us?
Capital presents to you, I believe, on February eighteenth.
February, oh, that late. Okay.
Well, the Capital Planning Committee report due is February eighteenth. That would give you folks about a month before the actual warrant has to be finalized.
Okay.
So you, again, you would have a couple of meetings in between. You probably even have your special meeting, so on and so forth, if you wanted to devote another meeting sometime to capital. But that was the target date that I had set for them.
When is the school vacation? That's not the week of the eighteenth, is it?
It probably is, yes.
So school committee probably won't have their presentation. I mean, the eighteenth might not be a good meeting for all that heavy-duty stuff if there's school commi, vacation that week. We might want to push it up or back. The school committee people might be not there.
We'd have to push it back unfortunately, because they're not due to us until the fourteenth. That would actually then have to go to that March second date. So they'd be simultaneously presenting their budget as the town manager presents his budget.
Alright. And people anticipating being gone that week for spring break or winter break?
I'll, I'll be here.
You'll be here? Tom? Okay, and I guess school committee, it's just Marty?
It is, it's basically Marty, Tom, and then maybe the chairman.
Okay. So we'll keep it to that, but we'll keep an eye on it, see if we have to have a special meeting.
Tom Mazza got this this morning. I asked him for his comments. I have not heard back from him. So within a day or two, you know, I may have that finalized.
Alright. And Capital Planning Committee will be on that day also. And anything else people see we should be moving around or be concerned about? I think it looks good. Okay, thank you very much for your work, Paul.
Okay.
And we'll have this as our, our goals and we'll know where things are heading. And Jay, if you see any changes, just let us know. Alright, so now we are moving on to the final Moody's, Moody's final report.
Well, we say the Moody's final report. It's actually an interim report that they do, they call it Issuer's Comments. They do it annually and, and around this time. We have maintained our double A, our double A-two rating. They, they did not put an outlook, an outlook on us as far as being negative, which sometimes they do. It's not positive either, so in essence, it's probably a better sign that it's nothing as opposed to having something that's negative. You know, it says we have an adequate financial position. We have a good economy here. We have a higher per capita income than comparable communities. They are concerned somewhat with our reserve levels when compared to double A-two communities. And they're also concerned with, with our debt level. It, it's getting a little bit high and it's creeping up. And it will creep up higher as the, as the council on aging comes on board and as the debt service gets involved on, on the DPW also.
And Wolf Swamp Field.
And Wolf Swamp Field, well, that's minor compared to the other two, but you're right. Those will get on in their records within the next year or two, quite honestly. They're actually looking back at years past information. I did ask them to update for what they have is our equalized valuation. Our, our, our most recent equalized valuation is two-point-one-six, which would put us very similar, if you look on page four, would put us very similar to where we find, where we were in two thousand and fourteen. You can see that it dropped off dramatically. But they said we're looking at information up to such and such a date and that was not available. So they did, they, you know, they didn't make any recommendations there. You know, it talks about Massachusetts, that we have a robust economy, that we will, we will benefit from the economy, you know, even going out into the eastern part of the state, the Boston area. That Massachusetts is somewhat different from other communities where we have the educational budget built right into the municipal budgets. But it also says that, you know, we, that Long Meadow per se has a very stable income. Most of our income, eighty percent, is, is property taxes, which again, is two and a half percent increase per se maximum. And that a lot of our, a lot of our costs are somewhat predictable also. We know what collective bargaining is going to entail. We know how much personnel roughly is going to be there. So that a lot of our budget is already predictable, which is a positive sign for them also. There's very little volatility in, in the numbers as we move forward. You know, I, I, I don't know what else to say on it. I, I don't think there's much of a chance of us getting an upgrade. I don't think there's much of a chance of us getting an upgrade in the near future. I will say also that potentially, there has been talk with our financial advisor of switching the rating agency from Moody's to Standard and Poor's. That's something that we'll talk about, because they do plan on, I don't want to say accelerating. We planned on borrowing the Council on Aging money in the fall. But I'd like to get that going now while the interest rates are very favorable. So that we would probably have that done towards the end of September, early October with a fall date. There'd be a couple of other projects that will be included with the Council on Aging. One, minimally one would be the closing of the landfill. We would put that amount of money in there. Any additional money that we needed for the DPW, we still have 1.3 that we can go go and bond for without going back to town meeting, we still have that. A couple of those little things, we'll also go into this bond issue. And again, as we move forward, again, rates are very favorable now on the long-term cycle, so just trying to take advantage of it.
Marie, Paul, I'm going to assume there's nobody from Moody's watching this on TV. There wasn't a word in here about approaching the tax cap. And that shocked me because as a rating agency or somebody looking at the town's finances, our inability to continue to raise taxes at some point three years down the road is absolutely critical.
I had that same question asked me of somebody from the Audit Committee, and I gave him kind of two answers. Either, one, they're not paying attention to it, which I would doubt to believe. The other is, this is a credit rating, our ability to pay debt. And we have obligations to probably pay our debt before we go into operational, so that we would probably prioritize our budgets in the future if we hit that, that we would pay our obligations on debt and it'd be more of the other operating budget that would suffer.
Or not, or we decided to pay our teachers and default on our.
Well, I mean, the alternative is file for bankruptcy.
I'm not serious about that thing.
Right, and the alternative is if we don't pay the debt, are we going to file for bankruptcy?
Wouldn't be the first.
Well.
Wouldn't be the first, but I.
Not on your watch, Paul, right?
Well, no, I also say that the state would also come in, and I think they've done this to other communities, is that they would direct state aid to the debt service and not pay us directly. They're going to send it off. So as far as it being an ability to pay, I don't think there's much of a danger for that.
That's a fair answer.
Well, I would think as soon as they see a problem, they're going to lower our rating like that. They're not going to care what it was the year before. They're going to just say, boom, you lose it, right? I mean, they'll say, last year was last year, and this year is this year.
If there is something serious enough, again, I know, again, in the very near future, there is nothing serious unless we hit into a major recession where the valuations really decline quickly. Then we're in very much trouble, because we will hit that ceiling a lot quicker than the 2024 with no growth. And we are experiencing a growth, you know, our next valuation, we should also see growth in our market value also. So short term, we look fine, longer term, you know, is more of a concern. It's more of a fuzzy type of thing.
Thank you.
Good answer. Strengths.
Yeah.
Tying into what we were talking about before, you're talking about a major bond issue in the fall town meeting. When do we have to really look at those warrant articles? Would that be the first weekend in September, the first meeting in September, or the second meeting in September?
I think we have, the first meeting in October is when you would have a draft of the warrant.
Okay, so we have.
Right, and then on this, I think it's the 16th or so, or that second meeting in October is when you would actually sign the warrant. Because that would give us two weeks prior to the November 5th meeting, whatever those dates are.
So the second meeting in September, you would like to discuss this before we get the warrant? The bond issues and stuff like that?
Well, I don't know what there is to discuss on the bond issue.
Okay, so you think you could do it all in that one meeting in October?
Yeah, well, no, I mean, we had a meeting last summer about the structure of that bond issue already. And it was basically to balance out the impact on the tax rate for anything that was debt excluded. The other, there are a few pieces of that that are not debt excluded that, you know, I would have that discussion in essence, it's going to have to come out of the operating budget per se. I don't, I want to have it sort of a semi-aggressive schedule. I don't want to push everything off into the, into the future. I think that's unfair for future kind of things. But, you know, something like the closing of the landfill, I want to say because there's not really a benefit to anyone at this point in time of doing that, I might look at something as a level debt service over the next 10 or 20 years. Something where there is a benefit immediately, I would want to probably have some more upfront payments, because those people who are going to benefit the most are the current people. So they should probably be paying a little bit more than maybe the people 10 and 15 years out who are going to be looking at renovations or major repairs back then. So that's the way my thought process is going on that. Like I said, when it comes to the big one of the Council on Aging, plus with the additional money for the DPW, we had that discussion last July and it kind of had that settled, and that was management of the tax rate. So we did not see a volatility in the impact on the tax rate. So it would shoot up, you know, astronomically. It was expected that we were going to see rises in the taxes because of the debt exclusion for the next three to five years, if I recall correctly. That there were small gradual increases, then it was going to level off and start to come down. I think we set it up so there was an opening in about 2027, so that if there was anything to do with the middle schools, that we would then have an opportunity to kind of fit something in in that area at that point in time.
When you have that together, maybe get that to the board a little before the meeting? I know usually it goes in the packet, but I want people to be able to have a chance to call you if they have questions. Because you're talking about a very complex bond issue.
We can get some drafts of those to you before it actually happens, just to make sure we're all on the same page. But my thought process, as I just explained, would be exactly what I said.
Okay, that'd be good. Any questions?
So this is just a one-on-one question. Who actually comes up with the language for the warrant articles? Who writes the words?
When it comes to the financial ones, I usually write the financial ones. When it comes to bylaws or something like that, I may, or the town manager or council may write those. But a lot of the financial ones I write. Some of them too are just copies of prior years, especially with the annual town meeting. You have certain ones that are just repetitious. But all the other, anything with the financial ones is usually myself.
Mark, we usually haggle over the paragraph explanation under the.
Mark does. It's a Mark rewrite site. Yeah, but because there's a lot.
I'll keep that in mind.
Were you worried you were going to be volunteers writing those?
Let Mark do it.
The new kid on the block.
Yeah, because there's a lot lining up for this meeting, the easements, the register of voters thing we adopted. They're asking us to redo, and then you just sent out that thing in the packet. So, and now possibly a audit of the road. So it just seems to be piling up a little bit more than I thought for the fall town meeting. All right, any other questions on the financial report?
Marie, can we go back to old business number four?
Well, that's what I was going to do next, yes, as we're going back to the collective bargaining ratification policy that Mark put together and Jay gave us some recommended amendments to it.
There's some thoughts on it, that's right. It was sent out last, the last meeting, and then Jay made some comments. So what we sent out was the one, Jay's comments were primarily, well, I guess I'll call preambles to the policy, let's say, prior to the, you know, prior to the commencement of negotiations and, you know, and then during negotiations, those first two sections. But based on having distributed this and discussed it a little bit, the rationale behind it, I'd like to put a motion on the floor that we adopt this as a collective bargaining ratification policy.
Well, first, let's have people, you know, I know we could do the discussion within the vote, but let's see if people have questions. Does anyone have any questions in regards to the policy? Let's see, 4A is the amended one? What's 4A? What are we voting on, four or 4A?
Four.
Four.
Four is the amended one.
Okay. Oh, it says revised, okay.
So I offered some comments just if I can, just because I think it is, everybody's got their roles, which is fine, and I think they're laid out, chartered this and that. But without being critical of anybody, I think it's incumbent that everybody's pretty much on the same page with regards to going in, what the general parameters are of what the, or what the thought process is with the expectations. And having a fruitful discussion relative to issues or concerns with these agreements, what potentially could be positions being taken both. And then I don't think it's unreasonable to be aware of where things are as the negotiations go on at various points. Because ultimately, you want to be able to, I think, to be in a position where you want to avoid a situation where you are presented at the end of the day with documents that you've had no real understanding or appreciation of how the negotiations are going, without infringing on the ability to negotiate the contract or the charter or anything like that. The truth is that I think that it works to an advantage for everyone if you start out with discussion with regards to financial expectations, thoughts, issues related to that, why it is certain things might go certain ways, and then at various points, appropriate updates as you work your way through. That way, everybody's on the same page. So when you get to a point of settlement, it's not, you understand how the flow has gone to this point in time, so.
Yeah, I think that, you know, when I looked at this, Mark, I was glad to see that the select board would be getting more information upfront earlier in the process, so we could have some input. And, but I was wondering, you know, this is negotiation for contracts with unions, but would this, like, if we talked about negotiations for contracts with the police chief and the fire chief, would that be under this umbrella or no?
The way it's stated, it says collective bargaining ratification. So it would not necessarily be included in this, but we could extend it to.
I was offering in the context of collective bargaining, it's how you want to deal with other issues, personals.
There's two things that I think we need to leave some wiggle room for in that when you go into negotiations, what you think you're going to be talking about in compensation and organization structure, everything, new things come up and new pieces get on the. So I think we should say on paragraph two, possible recommendations for any changes. We can get updates on it, but if we tied his or her hands to, we can't discuss uniform allowance because that wasn't a parameter discussed by the board, there has to be some sort of room that, oh, well, we can't talk about that because I haven't told the board about it. We can begin the process, but then there should be frequent updates on how the parameters have changed or what elements have changed. The other thing that worries.
Marie, can you just, we're in the second, I don't get that.
Paragraph two shall include his or her recommendations. I'd say possible recommendations. It's just a way to say, you know, we can't predict what the future is going to be.
I wasn't envisioning that everything was coming back over by blow. I was probably envisioning that there was a conversation at the beginning, here's where we are. And then I was envisioning at various points, and I don't see this as infringing on the role of the town manager of coming in saying to the board, you know, on a regular basis, here's where we are. This is where these came up. We're kind of working our way through these things, et cetera, et cetera, and, you know, getting feedback. But I still think the manager has the role of negot, but, you know, so you're aware of, if you see uniform allowance at the final settlement and nobody heard about it before that, then it's, you know, you want to try to avoid that. You want to be at least knowledgeable of what's going on. Those are economics, yeah.
So the select board does not get involved in the individual negotiations, right?
Not as I understand it in here, right. It's left to the manager, because the manager has responsibility, it looks like under the charter, for the administration of the operation. But my view is that you're the board which is funding it and approving it as it comes forward. So it is perfectly appropriate to start out with, here's what I'm looking at, here's what I think is going on, here's what I think the market is. Looking at that stuff, getting feedback back and forth, getting a sense of where the board, you know, you say, we'll, you know, if the board said you can settle it for 15%, settle it for 15%. If the board says, look, we're not really envisioning, it's tough times and we're envisioning 2% or nothing or this and that, then you need to have that conversation at the beginning, so everybody kind of understands the framework, recognizing that as you get into collective bargaining, it can move a little bit. But, and then there should be updates. It shouldn't be like we meet once and then I'll see you again when I give you the MOU at the end either. So it should be positive relationship.
Mark, just, so eight or so years ago, the town manager, Robin Crosby at the time, asked that the negotiating committee be herself, generally it's Paul Pesturzik, the department chair or department head and a select board member. And so there was a different select, somebody sat in with the police, somebody else with the, you know, Stephen changed that and said he did not want a select board member in there. And I don't know, I think it was he, oh, and also labor council was there at all, at all the meetings. So when Stephen went in there, it went from a five-person negotiating team to a two- or three-person. Stephen was the department head and Paul sat in there at times. But it was not a select board member, so a lot depends upon the person running the.
Does it, is it spelled out on the charter?
It just says that the town manager shall conduct negotiations.
It's a partnership, but he's still, the town manager is the primary negotiator.
But that doesn't necessarily mean that it's just the manager. The manager could have negotiated with labor council, it could be with other department personnel.
Oh, yeah.
You can do it anyway.
You need to negotiate.
Absolutely, yeah.
The other change I wanted to make is that under, once a draft settlement's been reached, presented to the board for ratification should be made available. Lots of times, there's last-minute changes, so he could make a presentation to us, then they go back into the negotiations the night before, and then it's brought back to us. So the effort should be made, if it's possible, to do 48 hours. But if we're doing last-minute saving, we shouldn't make it a shall, because then his hands are tied, or her hands are tied to come back to us.
My response to that would be, then, you know, then it wasn't ready to be brought to us at that. I mean, none of these, what this addresses, which is union negotiations, none of them are so time-critical that you can't say, if that's the case, then you really don't have the i's dotted and the t's crossed, wait two weeks to bring it to us, you know, and still give us enough information as opposed to, well, I brought it to you, but I'm still negotiating. I mean, because that's the scenario you just painted, Marie, was that it came to us, but there's still some last minute stuff.
He might be giving you an update, he says, I think this is what it is, but we got one more thing.
Right, so don't bring it to us for ratification.
Then we got to do special meetings multiple times in the week. I think we should.
Why do we have to do special meetings? Just hold it off to our next meeting for ratification?
Sometimes there are times to it. Go ahead, Richard.
My compadre, Mr. Gold, he's taking both sides of the fence on this issue, because I know Mark wants to be informed on everything, and your point is dolly, because they do change towards the end. So, you know, can't have our cake and eat it too, my compadre, but things can change. It's a fluid situation towards the end of negotiations, always has been, always will be. And you like to be informed of what generally is going on, and I do too, so it molds in with both.
No, but Richard, Marie's comment was prior to presenting it to us for final ratification.
Right.
You know, it would seem to me that prior to presenting us the final ratification, we ought to get 48 hours advanced presentation of the final deal. And to say, I'm presenting to you 48 hours in advance, but it's still changing, means it's not final.
Okay, well, let me give you a scenario which I think closer fits. The fact that we have made a proposal to the union and we think they're going to accept, and we're briefing you now in the fact of what this last proposal is, which we think will be finalized. I think that's more succinct with what we're talking about.
Right, but that doesn't mean you're briefing, that's briefing the select board and that's perfectly fine. But that's not coming to the select board, we want you to approve something that we, we're still proposing to the.
I think you can kick it back, in other words, if he brings, if finally makes the agreement on Monday, our meeting's on Tuesday, and he says, I can give it to you now, or I can wait 48 hours, and if you say, I feel that you're not following the spirit of the policy, I want the 48 hours, but if you say shall, the town manager has no option to give it to you the next night.
And that was my intent by doing this, that I don't want a town manager doing something, or whoever's doing something and saying, here it is, Monday morning for your Monday evening meeting, we just got it wrapped up. The concept of that is, you know, The concept of that is, you know, there's no telling whether those changes are substantial or not substantial, and we have time to do a full evaluation of it. And I gotta, you know, I'm gonna give the negotiator the benefit of doubt that they have, but the request is that the select board get advanced notice. If you're still negotiating on Monday, it's not going to be ready for Monday night.
I agree, I think, I agree with you, Mark. So I think, I think I like the 48 hours, I like the time to review, I like the showing the changes to whatever the contract was and all the information, I really like that, with respect to the changes. So if there's an expectation that, you know, the planning board, or the planning board, the select board will have the contract, the proposed contract, 48 hours before our meeting, and then on that day, something, a provision gets changed, I don't think that's a big deal. So if we have, if we have an agreement and something comes up or something gets worked out, I don't think we'd have to schedule another meeting in 48 hours, because 90% of the contract is going to stay the same, right?
So how would you change that if you didn't do the should?
Shall be made available to the select board if possible or if practicable. I need to tell.
Shall be made, if practical, and so instead of keep shall-
To the extent possible.
Shall be made to the 48 hours prior to the meeting, to the extent, to the extent possible?
Marie, that's just negating this. I mean, I just want to read the whole sentence. So everybody, "All collective bargaining tentative agreements or memoranda of understanding that are presented to the select board for ratification shall be made available to the select board for review, no less than 48 hours prior to the meeting at which the ratification is to take place." That's the way it reads it right now. And what you're saying is, well, but you don't have to have the whole thing. Well, if you don't have the whole, it's either you have it 48 hours in advance or you don't, because-
We can reject that if we feel it's not-
But that's just opening the door to somebody's-
But you're talking about the final agreement.
Of course I'm talking about the final, it says all-
If it's final-
Presented to the select board for ratification, that's what it says.
Marie, if it's final, there's nothing wrong with it. It's already negotiated, it's sealed, signed, delivered, everybody's agreed. And he's just saying, bring it to us 48 hours before we vote.
Which should be, shouldn't be a problem.
But we must understand, at that point, it's mute on whether it's 48 hours or five weeks, it's already agreed to by all parties, why would we want to change something that's already been agreed to?
Yeah, right.
I mean, it's, it really is, it's a signed deal at that point.
Yeah, well, it's only signed on one side.
But I understand, Marie, but you're not wanting to change something.
But you're right, it's a negotiated-
Yeah.
I get it.
Yeah.
You're right.
Give him the 48 hours, it's okay.
I agree.
That one's okay.
All right, we'll leave it at 48 hours, but-
It's okay.
I think a should gives you a little bit protection of the board. If not, you know, you're going to start being pulled into special meetings, I tell you, especially if they get tend, they get-
There are absolutely no union contracts that need to be, I mean, we've waited weeks to ratify-
We've gotten to the edge of arbitration a few times, yeah. There were some screaming select board members at some of those meetings.
I just want to say also is that, you know, these negotiations are not just like hard science, where we're pulling everything down. There is an art to it, and when you try to constrain the art of that negotiation, you could mess it up.
But this doesn't constrain the art of negotiation.
We count, we count on our town manager to be able to negotiate these in an artistic way, that's what I think. It's not easy, and we've been lucky. And I guess the only other thing I would want to ask is that, you know, from Jay, I mean, you know, when you see the difference between shall and, you know, whenever possible, do you see anything? Because we've had trouble with people, well, I wouldn't say people, but the town manager feeling that the board is interfering with his role or her role. And, and so when you look at those different words, you know, I don't want to put you on the spot here, but do you see any reason we should continue discussing this, or you think we're in a good place?
I think at the end, it's your policy, I mean, I think whoever's the manager is responsive to it. I think at the end of the day, what you're really doing is you're having a relationship of trust between both parties, and I think that, I think that's the intent really of this policy, is to make sure that everybody is walking along a similar path and understanding of where everything is, as compared to, you know, being surprised or not aware of things, and then suddenly being presented with things at the last moment. So I don't, I wouldn't, it's your policy, however you want to phrase it, whatever you're comfortable with, it's going to be your working relationship with the manager, but ultimately it's going to be down, really, no matter what you put in the policy, it's still going to be the personal relationship and the working relationship you have with the manager that's going to give you a confidence level of what's being presented, and that the manager is hearing what you're saying also, so there is that kind of back and forth, so.
Okay, so is there a, I would like to put a, well, first of all, we have to put the motion on the table before I amend it.
Okay, well, now, I'll put your, into the motion, I'll move that we adopt this policy, which is number four here, as revised by Jay Monahan, with the addition of the sentence that says, "The town manager will provide the select board with relevant information, including his or her possible recommendations for any changes involving compensation," which is Marie's suggestion. So that's the motion.
And then the second one I wanted to put in was the either should or to the extent possible. So why don't we say-
Yeah, do this amendment.
Do that as amendment, okay, so you have that one on.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that one? And I put a motion to amend it to say to the extent possible.
Second.
Well, someone has to-
Oh, I actually put the motion, unless you want to put the motion.
She can make a motion.
She can make, yeah, you are, you made the motion.
Where are you putting that?
No less than 48 hours prior to the meeting, to the extent possible. All right, any discussion on the amendment?
I'll just, again, comment that it defeats the purpose of the motion, I'm planning to vote against the amendment.
I'm sorry, but I would say that if it's not working, we can always make a change in the future.
And I think that Jay's point, whether it's in there or not, I think it's going to be a work in progress with the new town manager, as we can strike a positive relationship. Hopefully, this isn't an issue. But I do, I do like the sense of a little bit more flexibility, even though it may not be used or may not be a problem.
All right, all those in favor of the amendment? All right, all those, and then one closed. And all those in favor of the motion as amended? Okay, thank you. Now, we didn't make 830, but we got, I have the goal sheet, and I'm not planning on us making any major decisions here. This is the last sheet that we used in regards to the, with the last town manager, and what the way they did it is, we had six items on the top, and then the actual projects were placed underneath it. When I did, I put together the thing, I actually tried to look at stuff like, I was reading all this corporate stuff on the airplane, and you talk about the culture you want to nurture, the mission that you want to go through, which you give directions on where we're going as a board and the town. And so I was thinking to look to make some of these changes in here, and then Jay, you had some ideas that you were-
Yeah, but I mean, plenty of ideas, that's it.
Some gentle suggestions.
So, no, it was, no, it's your, your goals and objectives, your projects. I just looked at it as an opportunity for you to think a little bit, or suggest you might want to think about in your goals and objectives, some thoughts or projects or timelines, and how you could get to it. Because, you know, I think that it's, I think it's too easy sometimes for all of us in government, local government, to some, think that, you know, the boat is leaking and we just need to hold and tread water. And I think that there really are a lot of opportunities here to be strategic, to think about not now, just now, but also down the road. So I just threw some thoughts together. So generally speaking, you know, I'm heavy into thinking about these things, like a mission statement, what is it you want to be and where are you going? I played out this thing, we were talking about this at department managers meeting, they had to listen to me, but, so I used to do, we did this at my last decision, I did this for a while, with department personnel, and this would be both the select board and the administration working together on things that you would like to see, but we would play this thing called, similar to Long Meadow 2030, so, which is thinking about the community in 10 years from now, as compared to right now. Because when you do right now, you are basically dealing, it's hard to get away from the stuff, what goes on day to day. But if you think about it in 10 years from now, it's very freeing. You know, you don't, you're not restricted by things, and things change over the course of time. So, you know, what would the community be like, and what is happening in town government at that point? That allows you to think about what technologies will be there in 10 years from now. I mean, 10 years ago, I remember we used to do a survey, we would do annual surveys of our customers and ask them whether or not they thought they would buy an iPhone, or you're using a BlackBerry, that was huge. You know, electric cars didn't become something we looked at until 2015 or 16. And yet, in your head, you think about, well, those things have been there all the time, but things change a lot. There's a lot of stuff going on in other communities, a lot of these department managers are aware of things that are happening elsewhere, nationally, statewide, they can see what some best practices are in their environments. If they had to look at things, where are they? And that would allow you, if you were having those kind of conversations or thinking about it or part of the process, to think about your capital planning and your budgeting and orienting it, thinking about those things. So for example, you had the discussion on the asphalt. So if you had a commitment to that, and you had a commitment to looking at it every three years, you would budget for it, you would think about the relative of how we were going to fund it, you would think about how we were going to move on it, and you would keep it fresh. So the same way with regards to making sure you have an open space plan, the potential of doing a technology plan, some of those plans, people do them, and then you'll say, well, where are you on that? And they'll say, oh, yeah, we, and they're not, they've got other things going on, but it's just not part of their annual, let's update this thing and here we go. I think the same thing holds true with regards to capital planning and looking at strategic plans. There's no reason you can't be talking about department managers doing three-year strategic plans. What is it that is important? What did they accomplish last year? What things are they looking for in three years? That allows you then, when you're looking at your capital request, to be able to say, okay, so I see your request, I also see your strategic plan, I didn't see that you had this request anywhere in your strategic, how did that happen? What's the context for it? Where are you going? Where do you want to be in four or five years? Take the TIP program, so you're able to say, you know, we envisioned that this is long-term funding over the course, in 2025, there'll be another project or here. So you start folding things in, and you say, well, here's how we think we might, we work it through. You know, you talk about, there should be some things, I think, that should be done. I think you can legitimately say and have an expectation from the manager's standpoint and working with department personnel that there's annual performance reviews. I mean, isn't they say they're going to run to you with it, but it's a tighter organization if those things are happening and you create the structure for it. I think it would be helpful for you, or maybe, if I was town manager, I would, this is another thing you'd be thrilled with, I'm sure, but I would, once a year, come in and give you an organizational overview. You know, I would say, I think, so here's how you're providing certain services by certain departments or across the board. I know it sounds good, I know it looked good, but here's the challenges that you've got. You know, certain, certain things aren't getting done. You know, it could be because it's personnel, I might make, say, recommendations to split and go to a different way, but at least give you something as the policymaking board and the chief executive entity of the town to be thinking about and evaluating as you work your way through. Otherwise, you'll have the same discussion, you'll listen to, over the course of time, money's going to get tighter and tighter and tighter, and department managers run the risk of getting, and they're terrific department managers and personnel here, getting discouraged because we don't have any money, we can't do this. It's an allocation of resources, it's allocation of priorities, what are they? It's easy to just do the same thing every year. It's really more interesting to kind of revisit and see where you are. You talk about long-term energy, you know, five years from now, are all vehicles still going to be pretty much fossil, or are there going to be energy? I mean, are they going to be the kind of thing, electric? So hypothetically, you could say, you know, we want to keep our eye on this, you know, we're committed to green buildings, we're committed to this, we're committed to that from an energy standpoint. We should be, as an organization, saying, you know, let's look at what the prices are for electric vehicles. If the vehicles are staying in town or moving around, we should be thinking about if that's something that's important to us as a board, as the chief executive body, we should be thinking about it from, and saying, look, you should be buying electric vehicles. I mean, we should be getting charging stations, we should get electric vehicles, we should be setting the tone of it, because fossil fuels is not where we want to be, fossil fuels is not the future, and if fossil fuels are not there in five years from now, what are you doing? So at least you're thinking about it, you're moving your way through, you're starting to develop budget that says, we're going to put in charging stations here, here, and here, this is our objective, we're going to dip our toe in by purchasing a couple of electric vehicles for inspector of cars or this and that within the town, recognizing electric for, you know, construction stuff or fires is probably way cost prohibitive, but start to take a look at it, that's what you would stand for. Looking at other opportunities, dog parks, in, you don't have a dog park, that's something communities are looking at, you could look and say, this is where we are, that would be tied to your open space plan, maybe. And I think also, you know, facilities assessment and capital plan and budget and vehicles. There should be, I think, a regular, a very clear foundation in your capital planning with regard, and an assessment of facilities that allows you then to start folding that in, as well as folding in vehicle, viable vehicle replacement plan, as compare, and having that shown to you over a five-year period, as compared to each year, oh, somebody comes in with a vehicle and, oh, I didn't see the vehicle last year, oh, well, something's happened this year. Okay, well, stuff happens, but there should be a flow to the five-year plan. I mean, it can change, I mean, crap happens, but, and circumstances change as priorities, but at least you should be able to kind of follow along on things, I think, so that you're doing it. So when I saw your goals and objectives, like, obviously threw some stuff in, and I apologize, I didn't, but I think, you know, it's a great opportunity to think not only of where you are today and what you're looking at, but to kind of, and you're so well-positioned as the chief policy board, and you've got such great department managers, if you could start to engrain that, maybe in the overall framework going forward, and making sure plans are up to date, or looking at things and starting to see strategic plans and pull them in, and talk with department managers and the board, and the manager with regards to what the priorities are at each one, what do they hope to achieve this year? And if that, then it helps you allocate the resources that are there, because, you know, at the end of the day, the budget and the chief, and the capital improvement plan are your chief policy documents. I mean, at the end of the day, that's where you're putting the money. Whatever you say, what you're saying, showing is the budget, is where you're allocating it. So you've got that, you've got looking at some of the financial stuff, I mean, Paul does just a tremendous job, obviously, but, you know, you've got enterprises that are out there, you've got potential other opportunities, some of the enterprises are 100%, some of the enterprises are not 100%, what are you doing, what's your long-term thought on that? There's no right or wrong answer, it's just, so, I just took it as the opportunity to hold your meeting up for 10 minutes by doing, but I always find it very interesting, very creative, and I thought that if you were talking about your goals and objectives, that I would at least throw that out, so, that's it.
Great idea, so you're suggesting we consider starting with a strategic vision?
Yeah, I would think you do, but I think you also should be talking, even with your manager candidates or people like that, you should be talking about what you're looking for relative to, you know, the administration, how you're hoping that they, you know, you should be, I think it's viable to talk about strategic planning. I mean, I think, I don't know how you do a capital plan without having a strategic plan, because otherwise, it's like- like, you know. So, but I think it's kind of, and it's good. It's another, it's another of those relationships you're going to have with your town manager to do that. And I think you show that it's important to you. I think that, and that you're, you're listening to it. And, you know, and it's a great opportunity for dialogue with the, the managers. You know, they know what's going on in the fields. They can tell, you know, there are a lot of interesting things happening in local government nationally. You can share some stuff with that. They can, they have a sense of it. Technology stuff, I mean, we were doing mobile applications. There's things going on. It takes, it's not like it's going to happen one year. It's a process, you know. But it's what makes it interesting. So, thank you.
Oh, Richard?
Yeah, we had, whereas back on capital planning, that I love to hear what you're saying, because that's the background that I came from, was programmatic planning.
Yeah.
Not just three years. I, I went out 20 years.
Yeah.
You know, if I replace a heating plant today, I should put that on a 15, 20 years out that that's coming back.
That's correct.
And put a 3% escalator, 4%, whatever it is. And then the master plan just keeps rolling forward.
Yeah.
We've seen too much flavor of the month, flavor of the day procurement actions. And we've seen it just spread like wildfire through our capital program. Boilers got hot a couple of years ago. We were replacing boilers all, and there wasn't a systematic plan. And they weren't, they weren't there. They weren't there two years ago. And all of a sudden, we're replacing boilers, commercial boilers that are only 15 years old.
Yeah.
And that signaled a major problem in our maintenance program. Because that shouldn't be happening. That's resident, that's cheap residential boiler burnouts, not commercial, not what we're paying. We're paying hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, we've talked about this on the board many times. It's just exactly every word of what he said. He said, "We've not had a long-term commitment to keep, to keep rolling with that." And it needs to be transition planning.
Yes.
You know, we got, they got a guy right over there.
Yep.
That eventually is going to retire.
Time to be ducking.
Yeah. And that is the fountain of finance.
Well, he didn't tell you about the commitment he made to be here for another six years. So, I'm sorry. I meant to bring that up.
But I mean, transition from behind. You know, everybody, you know, you talk about evaluation of the organization. Yeah, we should have a primary evaluation on the, the importance of every position and how it fits into our structure. So, if there is a major thing to come in, we don't play games. You go to the plan and say, "Okay, these are the positions that have been identified."
Sure.
And we're going to change and go contract or whatever, whatever, whatever. And it's all strategic planning.
I completely agree. We, we actually had part of that conversation today. Because, excuse me while we just talk of you like in the third person.
Believe it.
No, no, don't. But, you know, I mean, I think one of the things that's interesting here is, you know, Paul does a great job, but he oversees and has responsibility for a wide berth of things. If Paul left tomorrow morning, and I was hiring on that position, I would say it would be unlikely to find somebody who would have his skill set. So, they might come in strong with some financial stuff, but they might not have familiarity with the way town government operates. They may not feel the assessors. They might not be dealing with human resources or some of the other things. So, organizationally, I would have to modify, organizationally, be responsive to that and figure out how it was, if he left tomorrow morning, how it was that we were going to, at least in the short term, fill those slots. Because those still need to be addressed in some way. That's why organizationally, it would make sense, some transitional discussions and looking at things just to see how it is that if somebody leaves and has the kind of background and responsibilities, that organizationally, you'd be hard-pressed to replace just one person. Because in local government, so many times, it is really only one or two people in a department. And if they go and whatever they're covering, it's very hard to get somebody in, eh, right away. And secondly, it's very hard to get them in with the same skill set. They could have some strong skill, skill sets. But organizationally, you have to modify in order to, to make it work. So.
With the predetermination on what's the most important skill set.
Absolutely.
Is what needs to be made.
That's correct.
And, and, and we haven't done that.
Right.
Max?
So, Jay, I have a couple of questions to kind of follow up on your comments. Because historically, Long Meadow's been working out of what I'll call a culture of scarcity rather than a culture of abundance. By that, it's a, you know, we, we can only raise our budget 2.5%. And if somebody comes up with a great idea that takes more than 2.5%, I mean, somebody else is going to get less.
Right.
And so, how do we square, you know, your, your thought, which I, I happen to agree with, in, in terms of, let's, you know, it's kind of like zero-based thought of, of starting on visioning.
Right.
With this idea that, yeah, we don't really want to, don't think we want to give up on anything. And we've got this culture of, in fact, existence of the scarcity limited of, of at a 2.5%, you know, increase in, in the funding for this each year. So, how do we bring those together? And the other just comment I was going to comment to you about was this, your comment about organization. I remember when, you know, a few years ago, when Mario Maza was hired, our prior DPW director retired. And, you know, our DPW is an amalgamation of the old Parks and Rec Department and the, you know, and, you know, at the time, we said, "Maybe this is a good time to reorganize." And, you know, so, I, I think we're open to looking at, at, at things like that, just because we've always done things. But I'm more concerned about this, how do you bring in new ideas when you barely have the resources to kind of just keep doing what you're already doing, unless you figure out, "Well, we don't need to do that anymore."
Well, I don't know. I, I think it's a, it's a great point. I, I think it's a hard, they're hard choices. First off, you're making, you've got to make choices. So, it necesses, but also, you have to have a vision. You have to say, "I think, you know, electric cars are important to us as compared to fossil. This is where we want to be. A technology plant is important to us, and that will help guide some decisions." Because you're going to allocate resources to technology. You're going to allocate resources to this. You're going to make, you're going to have personnel which may or may not be there at certain points, which may give you an opportunity to revisit some of those areas. But if you haven't given it a lot of thought, or you're doing a knee-jerk of, "There's a vacancy, so let's do something." And you haven't set a tone and a context for doing it over the course of time, then I think it, you know, it's not as well-deliberated for it. I think, you know, I think it's really comes down to what things are really important to us? What are we trying to achieve? If you're getting, putting stuff on regular cycles of doing things, if you are saying, "These are our cornerstones. This is what we're looking at," you can build on it and then work your way from that. It's a very, very hard choice. It's very easy just to say, "This is the way it was." But you are still going to be buying vehicles. You're still going to be maintaining facilities. You are still going to have technology here. You're all, you're going to fund those in some form. And so, they're going to be, and you're going to fund personnel. So, and you're going to be providing services because that's what people are, are looking for. What services are they looking for? What's reasonable, et cetera? So, all of that is, I think, part of the ingredients for you to look at and develop and maybe work with your manager for a vision of where you are today and where you could be down the road and what you're trying to get to. So.
Is it appropriate for us to ask town department heads, "What are we doing now that we won't be doing or shouldn't be doing in, in three or four or five years?" So, we can find those areas that we can maybe stop funding early and, and allocate the funds.
Yeah. So, I would say that, you know, I think you could say to, I think you would, it's, I don't know if it's, yeah, I think it's legitimate for you through the manager to say, "This is what, you know, we are interested in your thoughts and the administration's thoughts relative to what things could be provided or what's there and, and what could be, where we could be." I think it would take some work with the managers to kind of get to a point where they could, the manager or a really good presentation could be made to you. But, yeah, I mean, I think that that's a legitimate thing of working with the manager and, and saying, you know, "As we look at our budget, as we, things like that. You're dealing with our budget recommendations. You're dealing with presenting to us the capital plan. You are dealing with the administration. Give us a sense of, you know, where you are, where we could be in five years from now. What opportunities are there that we need to be? Do you have thoughts on how it would be funded?" I think that's perfectly legit. Yeah.
I know, I know you want to wrap up, but I just want to say that, you know, I think we have a lot of department heads that are doing that, you know, and they're looking at, you know, certain ways that their budgets, budgets get trimmed now and then. So, you know, that's good. And I know you'll see that. You'll probably have time to see, see some of that while you're here. But I, the last thing, the other thing that you brought up is this whole idea of, you know, how are things going to be in 2030? And, you know, we really should have some speakers come in and talk to this board about the future. You know, some millennials and some folks who may be from our technology department. But, yeah, we, you know, we need to be thinking about that stuff. And there's a lot of things that we're not exposed to in our day-to-day lives that are going to be around us, you know. And, you know, are we going to be more like Europe and people riding bikes all over the place? You know, and what are the trends? And, so.
Well, I want everyone for the next meeting to start thinking about a strategic vision, Long Meadow, where we feel we will be or want to be in a few years. And then we can start. Richard?
Yeah, real quick. You're about ready to wind it down?
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to personally thank Jay. The seamless transition that he has made, walking here off the street and joining this group. And I'd be hard-pressed not to identify that you've been here five years.
He feels it, too.
No, because if I was telling you, I would have drove you crazy by the fifth year. Yeah, never would have made five, probably.
Yeah. I'm talking about the way you present yourself and the way you're willing to share. And I'm sure the general public has picked up on this pretty quickly, too. But I certainly have picked up on it, the seamless transition. And I know it's difficult to walk in, but you've applied yourself immensely.
No, it's great. You guys are, are great. And I've enjoyed working with you guys. And I look forward to it. And poor Paul is, is probably drinking more now than he ever did, but that's fine.
Boy, that'd be hard.
But it is. It's a great group of people. And there's some great opportunities for, to go down. So, thank you very much.
One more thing?
Yes.
Tesla just announced a program a couple days ago where they are going to put free a 3.7-kilowatt system on your home and, and charge your rental fee of $50 a month.
Yep.
Wow.
It's unbelievable. And you, if you don't want it, you just turn it off. They leave it up there, or they remove it for $1,500. But they're funding the systems.
Wow.
I think it's a 3.7. So, it's not a major one. And there, there was a graph that showed what the savings were in, in, say, Massachusetts. It's pretty significant savings. It's not meant, not meant for total power, but it's, it's their growth. It's a new position that they're taking for long-term growth. And they're basically wanting to get it on every home in America. And if they do, they're $50 a month. I mean, the dynamics is there. And they're willing to do the upfront.
Are they willing to do municipal buildings, too?
Well, it's only 3.7. Now, see, it's a fairly small system. But the rent fee is only $50 a month.
Wow.
And you can turn it off anytime you want it turned off. And you immediately, and apparently with this smaller system, it cuts to a lot of the regulatory type stuff. The analysis on your structures goes way down because every house can support a 3.7 KW system. It's a really, it's a bold venture move for growth on their part.
Oh, fabulous.
I should, one more.
Mark?
So, when we were, we were busting Paul's chops earlier about succession.
[laughing]
So, the, the most recent.
Two weeks from now.
The most recent round of a community compact grant funding is available now.
Oh, wonderful.
Yeah. And, and one of the best practices is succession planning. So, I mean, there's a whole list of them, but.
Are we eligible again?
Yeah.
We are. Okay.
Yeah. They, in the pack, it was just a letter from.
There's a letter, but I'll take a look at that. That's a real possibility that we could do. And I, I do agree, too. I think it would be great for the board to have some speakers at various points over the course of your tenure to kind of think about it. Because it would give you a sense of, it would just trip you probably into thinking about, "Oh, this, this, and this." And that would be great. Yeah.
Yeah. All right. So, how do we do the community compact? Does it have to come in front of us to vote? When is, do you know when the date is due?
I'm not sure. So, I got the.
We'll take a look. I can take a look.
The DLS.
Okay. That'd be great.
We'll take a look. That's great. That's a good idea, actually.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you very much for joining us. Our next meeting will be the Tuesday after Labor Day. Okay. Thank you.